If there is anyone wishing to address the board tonight during public comment, please take a moment to fill out the registration form and turn it in prior to the public comment being started. I'll call a meeting to order. Mr. Dowdner, would you lead us in pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is in its hands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The rest of the show, Mr. Billian and Mr. Huntimer are absent, all of the board members are present. Mr. Board, has public notice been given?
Yes, it has.
Public comment. For policy 0167.3, anyone wishing to participate in the period of public comment must be a resident of the Richland School District, a parent or legal guardian of an enrolled district student or an enrolled district student. Persons wishing to participate must first be present at the meeting and must register in advance. A total time allotment of thirty minutes will be given for public comment. Each participant shall be given three minutes to address the board. A translator may be used to translate verbal communication to the board. If such translation services are used, six minutes shall be given to that participant with only the first three minutes being designated to the total time allotment. Speakers are not permitted to make inflammatory comments, use inappropriate language or gestures, attack specific persons, or make a specific person the subject of their remarks. Please see policy 0167.3 for a complete list of requirements and restrictions. If a person is unable to adhere to these rules, they may be directed to end their comments. Have any papers? Assuming nobody's wanting to address the board. All right. On to reports, district administrators' report.
Okay, so just a few things for the board and the public. We completed our super-registration for our district last Tuesday. The eighth, for the most part, it was a great success. We did have a few hiccups early on with pictures and the number of cameras that they had available. So there was a little bit of a wait for parents at the very start of it, but after that it went really, really well. We had about half of our students ended up getting their picture taken. And as of this afternoon, we're up to over nine hundred of our students are registered and enrolled and have all of their forms completed. So that's up dramatically from the past. Last year at this time, you know, we were sitting at about the seven hundred and twenty-five mark. So to be up over two hundred, those aren't necessarily new people. They're just everybody that has filled out and completed all of their paperwork. So that process is going very smoothly. We continue to work on the students that still need to complete that process with their parents. Reminder to the public that the bids for Jefferson, anyone wishing to put in a bid for the purchasing of Jefferson is due on Wednesday, the sixteenth, at noon due to the district office. Buildings and Property will open those bids up and do a session on Thursday. And then finally, on Thursday, personnel will meet this Thursday starting at six o'clock with Buildings and Property to follow around seven fifteen. Any questions from the board? Total side note, as it relates to enrollments, I think we are now up over fifty new enrollments since the end of school year this summer. So that could be either people moving into our district, people who were living in our district that open enrolled out that are now intending to come back, or open enrolls that are choosing to attend our school district this fall. So around fifty, again, that's just a number, right? They don't have to declare until they actually start attending school. But it is optimistic that we've got a good chunk of people choosing to come back or come to the Richland School District.
Thank you, Mr. Board. Board member reports.
Policy committee met on August third, and we did the schedule at a glance. We also did, talked about the meal collection policy that will be brought on later tonight. And we also talked about policy for organizational charge, and that has postponed to September.
Curriculum also met Thursday, August third, and we did our 2324 schedule at a glance as well. We had a presentation, it was an overview of the charter schools, which is going to be presented tonight. We also had a presentation on a new, necessarily new, but a new idea of a bullying prevention task force. But that is actually going to come to the full board on our next board meeting on August twenty-eighth. And then we reviewed our goals and priorities for the 2324 school year, but that is later on in tonight's agenda as well.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? To the minutes. Is there a motion to approve prior media minutes of July twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-three?
I'll make that motion. Who's second?
Motion by Mrs. Dickman, seconded by Mrs. Wertz. Discussion. Ms. Troxell?
Aye.
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 Aye. On to agenda six, financial items, approval of statement of cash.
I move we approve the statement of cash dated August tenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Motion by Mr. Dowdner, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Wertz. Mr. Bosworth, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I would point out that we made a transfer from a local government investment pool to Community First Bank in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars for general operations of the district. I understand.
Discussion. Mr. Dowdner?
Aye.
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 Approval of invoices?
I move we approve Community First Bank General Check and Account Tax number eight five five zero nine through number eight five 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 two and ACH number two three two four zero 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 four nine through two three two four zero zero one 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 for a net total of eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eighty-two dollars and thirty-four cents. This is for the purpose of general operating costs of the district.
Motion made by Mr. Dowdner, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Dickman. Mr. Bosworth, anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, just a couple of things. In the check statement on page three, check eight five five three two, you'll see some transactions here that list maybe an administrator's name and then some things after it. So for example, if you look at that one, it would say S. Board, Pizza Hut, Buffalo Wild Wings, Appleton Residence Inn. Somebody looking at that would probably draw the conclusion Mr. Board is going to Buffalo Wild Wings and Pizza Hut and staying at the Residence Inn. But in actuality, what this is, is the district has a small number of credit cards that we use for travel situations or quick purchases. So this would have been a student organization. They just happened to use Mr. Board's card on that instance. And the second thing I want to draw your attention to is in the ACH. About a third of the way down the first page, it says floor finish, about twenty-five hundred. That's just floor finish all across the district. All of our floors are getting shiny right now. That's not necessarily the refinishing of the intermediate floor, which if you haven't looked at it yet, looks fantastic. It's basically identical now to the high school floor. That will be paid in the near future.
Questions? Discussion? Mrs. Dickman?
Aye.
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 Aye. Right. Agenda item seven, consent agenda items, Mrs. Steele?
Motion to accept the donation of backpacks and school supplies valued at approximately a hundred dollars from Max Gun Latch per policy seventy-two thirty. Motion to accept the donation of athletic training equipment and supplies valued at approximately a thousand dollars from Richland Center High School Athletic Booster Club per policy seventy-two thirty. Motion to accept the donation of the Richland Center High School Hornet Wings for photo opportunities valued at approximately two hundred and seventy-six dollars from the Walz Cooper and Elliott Insurance per policy seventy-two thirty. Motion to approve the Southwest Cap Food Program vendor agreement as presented. And motion to approve the 2324 contracted service agreement between the Richland Hospital Incorporated and the Richland School District for physical therapy services and athletic trainer services. And that is it.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda items?
No.
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Wertz, is there a second? Second. Second, Mr. Dowdner. Any discussion? Mrs. Wertz?
Aye.
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 Is there a motion then to approve the modified agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Dickman, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded, Ms. Troxell. Discussion. Aye.
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 To agenda item nine, information and discussion items, district transfers and vacancies.
So in the, sorry, in the two attachments that you've got there, we've got our certified staff. As I mentioned before, we've had a good hiring season, but it doesn't seem to ever end. We do have a couple of resignations that will be pending and some additional staffing to fill. We've also got a part-time PE teacher to fill in that certified as well. In the support staff, we've still got some custodial positions that we need filled and a couple of resignations pending later on in tonight's action to fill as well. Any questions from the board on transfers, vacancies, or openings?
To item nine B, HR Director Summary of Exit Interview Findings.
So as part of the reconfiguration that took place specifically in district office last fall, one of the things that the board did was approve an HR director. And one of the goals that I had heard from numerous board members is we need a better onboarding and offboarding process. We need to gather good information on why people are coming to our district, why people are leaving our district. And so Amber Bingham, our HR director, has been gathering data from, through exit interviews of all staff that have departed our district over the last year. And she gave a summary to our administrative leadership team, followed by a summary to our personnel committee. And I was here at the board to give that same information to the board in public. So let me see if I can help you get set up here, Amber. Is there a microphone up there?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Where's your keyboard? This one. You do have a copy of the PDF as an attachment in your electronic board package.
Okay, so as you mentioned, the HR director position was approved in the fall of two thousand and twenty-two. And one of the goals of this position was to improve the onboarding and offboarding processes within the district. So since November of two thousand and twenty-two, I've been reaching out to those that leave the district and offer them the opportunity to meet with me for an exit interview. Tonight's summary includes responses from thirteen participants. Of those thirteen participants, nine were teachers, two were in the exempt, non-exempt employee group, and two were support staff employees. Unfortunately, there were an additional five employees that either declined the opportunity or never responded to my request. Of those interviewed, the employee with the least amount of service with the district was four years. The employee with the most amount was fifty years, and the average years of service was fifteen point eight years. Okay, when asked what brought you to the Richland School District, the top reasons were they were looking for a job or looking for a better balance between work and personal life. What factors contributed to your... What factors contributed to your decision to leave? Personal reasons or changes in education? Many that said changes in education. Said they were no longer able to keep up with the changes' expectations in education, such as too many duties or technology passing them by. Personal reasons could have included anything from just leaving a full-time position to a few other status change. What might have been done to prevent you from leaving? Majority said nothing. There were a few that said, you know, a full-time position with benefits or some said better communication. How was your overall experience working for the Richland School District? Everyone but one said awesome, great, good. One said stressful. Would you consider returning to the district in the future? When asked if they would consider returning, and five participants say that they would consider returning in the future, others said they would only return if it was for co-curriculars. Those that weren't interested in returning were those that were just ready to move on to the next stage in their life. Would you recommend a friend or family member to work here? Everyone but one said yes. Were you and your supervisor able to work together effectively? Everyone said yes. Those that had been here for a number of supervisors felt there were definitely some supervisors that they worked better with than others, but all in all, they felt they worked together effectively. What did you like most about working here? Everybody interviewed mentioned that the thing they liked most was either the kids or the staff and coworkers. They felt there were great working relationships among themselves and their coworkers and or departments. What did you like least about working here? The top reasons were pay rate, although they felt that it was slowly improving, a lack of community support or better communication between the district and the community. And a number of participants commented how education is changing and becoming more difficult with more expectations. If you could change one thing about the district, what would it be? The top responses were communication, support, or nothing. Any questions, or is there anything additional that you'd like me to be asking in future exit interviews?
I think the questions are good. I would just be interested, probably more specific for the teachers. Did they leave, and even though they might have been, you know, for the most part, I would say fairly happy, did they go to another district? Or like, was it a personal reason that they left? Or I think there was one slide that had data on there. I guess that's maybe what I'm wondering, like, did they choose a different career path or did they stay about the same, but they went to a different district? I don't know.
Yeah.
Any questions from the board?
I mean, I think it's like on what factors contributed to your decision to leave. I mean, I feel like it's probably in that data. Should I maybe just pull that out? If helpful?
I also think that, you know, we have thirteen people, but as we continue to get larger people responding, we'll start to develop, you know, bigger, not bigger, but more consistent themes and trends, and we'll be able to act on it when we get that. So I think this is a good starting point. Thank you.
When you did this, it was, there wasn't answers they could choose from, correct?
Correct. It was all open-ended questions.
Yes, okay.
Yep, so there were some where, you know, somebody might have taken the question differently than what I was thinking, but yeah, they were all open-ended.
On the better communication part, did any of them have suggestions on how we could improve communication?
They didn't. A couple of them that mentioned the communication felt that it was getting better, but they didn't have suggestions. And that's maybe something that I'll ask in the future when, you know, it had gotten brought up at Personnel, but, you know, when they say that, I'll ask, you know, for suggestions.
Because that's one topic that comes up, and we do discuss it from time to time.
Yeah.
Any ideas would be helpful.
Definitely. Okay, thank you.
Sarah, can you hear us? Did you unmute her? Yeah, she's on mute, it looks like. Sarah, can you hear us? We can't hear you.
Hi, I thought maybe I'd try and come back in. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
We can? Thank you.
All right, well, good work for whoever was troubleshooting over there. Am I interrupting, or am I up already?
Just give me one, just give me one second here. So agenda nine C, RSD Charter Schools Overview.
Okay, so this past spring, the board approved the second charter school of the district, the Partner Charter School. That in conjunction with the Richland Online Academy make up our two charter schools that we have in our district. Those two charter schools are overseen by one governance board, and then the governance board is kind of overseen, yet works in conjunction with the school board. And so Sarah Hackett from CISA nine is joining us tonight, and she gave a presentation at the curriculum committee, and we'd like to do it at the board level here as well, on really educating the board on their role as it relates to charter schools when you have a governance board, what the roles of each entity are, and how it kind of all operates and works together. Go ahead, Sarah.
She muted herself.
She muted herself, she's muted? Hang tight.
Can we unmute her publicly?
Sherry, you probably got to make her, you know, make her a post again because she left and came back in. Click participants.
All right, good, and then I can probably screen share too. Perfect. All right, are we in here, you can hear me?
We're good.
All right, well, thank you so much for having me. So I will just go over some charter school kind of overview, knowing that not everybody on the board was around when Richland Online Academy came into being or was renewed, and so it might be a good refresher. And then also, now that Partner is starting up, it's a good time to just really make sure that everybody understands what it means to authorize a charter school and how that kind of works. So I won't go into all of the hairy details that I can get into for a longer training, but I wanted to make sure to give you sort of an overview. And then I'll be able to do more in depth another time if you'd like me to ever come back or answer really specific questions as you go about your work. All right, so I'm just going to move forward, and I'm going to move... I'm going to try to clear the screen. It looks like somebody drew on it. Maybe if I, well, yeah, I'm going to stop sharing and start again and see if we can get rid of that. Okay, great. So I am from the Wisconsin Resource Center for Charter Schools, which is housed in Tomahawk, Wisconsin, at CISA nine. And we're a statewide office here to support charter schools, districts who are authorizers of charter schools, the governance boards of charter schools, and just all things charter schools. And so we are funded partially by the State Department of Public Instruction, DPI, through a grant contract, but then also we are here to provide schools directly support contracts as well. So today I wanted to go over the fact that there are charter schools all across the state of Wisconsin, and we work with, you know, many of them, we offer services to all of them. Two hundred and thirty-six, I think it might be up to two hundred and thirty-nine this coming year with a hundred different authorizers, most of which are school districts like yourself. So you are not alone in this venture, and we are all here to support. So we work really closely with the Wisconsin Association for School Boards. Many of you have probably been to their annual conference before. We always go as well. We do a session, we have a booth, and so we'll probably see you there. I know I saw Sherry there last year. And then we also work with our CISA nineteen and the other CIs across the state. And then we work with the National Network of District Authorizers, as well as lots of other partners to really make sure that we have all the best resources for you. So a basic overview of charter schools is really this contract, which you just signed for Partner. And so that may be kind of fresh in your head anyway, but the contract is really the thing that makes this school. It's this relationship between a charter school authorizer, which is you, the school district board, and this governance board, that right now is called the ROA Inc. Board, but they're going to... but they're going to change it to the Richland Charter Schools Inc. Board. And so you'll have this relationship where basically you're saying, we want the governance board and the, you know, folks who are leading the school to carry out this school model. We're giving you the autonomy to do school differently, and in exchange, you're guaranteeing some accountability factors. You're saying that the kids will, you know, perform to a certain level, there will be a certain level of enrollment, there'll be some kind of measurable outcome to show that the thing that you're saying, yep, go ahead and do that thing, is actually being implemented properly and is actually meeting whatever need you identified as a district, which is why you wanted to do the school in the first place. So you have the online school to fill that need in your community and actually beyond, and now you have the partner school to fill a different need in your community and serve kids differently. And so you're sort of giving that autonomy in exchange for that accountability. So that's what's sort of the glue that holds it together. So now I'll talk for a little bit about your role as an authorizer, so that you can know how do, how do all these pieces sort of fit together. We've never, you know, we've had a governance board with ROA, but now there's kind of multiple things going on, and we want to make sure we know how the governance board fits into all of this. So I apologize for the tiny text here. I don't know how big of a screen you've got me on right now, but I've got printouts of this as well, and Sherry has these slides she can share with you. But basically, you're starting right here with like this yellow. You're choosing to be an authorizer of two charter schools. So you have some kind of framework, some kind of plan for how these schools are going to run. So then you enter into a contract with them that articulates, you know, this is the need you're meeting, and here's how you're going to meet it, and how we're going to measure it. Then you'll have this period of oversight. So over the next five years, you're going to be watching that the school's enrollment, their assessments, their, you know, feedback from parents, the reports that they do for you, their governance board reports, their financials, all that stuff. You're just sort of overseeing at a high level to say, is the school doing, or are the schools doing what we set out to do? If you start to notice that they're veering from that, or that they're failing to perform in some way, you could issue some sort of corrective action, which is basically a fancy way of saying, you know, we thought that you were going to have all these community partnerships, or hey, we thought you were going to have this many enrollments. It looks like that's not happening, so does something need to change? Do we need to set some kind of new parameters to make sure that, you know, if this school is going to continue to exist and be successful, then, then we need to do that in order to be ready for that very last phase right here, which is the renewal. So every five years, you have the opportunity to sort of reassess and say, is this still the school that we need it to be? Does it need to be bigger, smaller, different somehow? And then you get to make those changes. So I think authorizing is super exciting, because you get to really sort of like let these new models, let these different kind of options for kids exist, but it's really like, it's a bit of a high stakes endeavor for those who are venturing to do the school, because they really need to prove themselves to you. It's not just a given that they get to exist. They really need to show their performance based on what's in that contract. So your role is to uphold best practices, like you do for all your schools, encourage and endorse autonomy, and then assure that the student of public interests are being held up as well. So your legal responsibilities really come down to filing an annual report with the state every December that says, here are the charter schools we oversee, and sort of what it costs us to oversee them, and here's the services we provide to charter schools, and then here's any new charter schools who have sort of, you know, presented themselves to us and maybe may or, may or may not be moving forward. So it's not a super complex report, but that is kind of the like have-to-do as a district authorizer. So then I'll talk a little bit about the governance board, and I know I don't have a ton of your time left this evening, but I want to make sure that you know the role of the governance board and what you can expect from them, because they are the other party on this, these two contracts that you've signed, and so we want to make sure that you have that really solid working relationship. So that, the governance board is an established entity with the state of Wisconsin, with the Department of Financial Institutions. They are a nonstop, nonprofit entity that can become tax exempt if they choose to be, currently, I don't think they are. Many governance boards do become tax exempt and have their own bank account for fundraising and for donations and other things to sort of operate as their own financial, in part as their own financial entity as well. Your governance board currently doesn't have that, but your governance board currently is held accountable through their contract with you, the public authorizer, and also held accountable to their bylaws, which also follow open meeting laws. So they post agendas, they take minutes, they do elections internally, different than your elections, but they do have to answer like open records requests and all that kind of stuff as well. And so they are keeping track of all of their business as an entity, voting on the contract, voting on their members, voting on their budget, all that kind of stuff to do the operations of, well, of operating the school, and then answering to you, the authorizer. So this is what my next slide kind of shows, is that there's this hierarchical setup where the federal government allows for charter schools in the public school law. The state of Wisconsin also articulates how charter schools work in our state statutes. In the state statutes, it's named, it names you as a school district board to be a potential authorizer, so you have the right to choose to authorize. And then from there, the governance board is an entity that then sort of answers to all of these above it. And so they are held to whatever policies they adopt in the contract, generally the policies of the school district unless they choose to waive some. And then they have their own bylaws, which are separate from yours, because they are their own legal entity, and they sort of share a ton of services, and so it can get really complicated. So this little maze of a slide is just to kind of demonstrate that there are arrows kind of going in multiple directions. This little, if you just look at this left half of the slide, where you have the authorizer, I mean, governance board, the authorizer grants a contract to the governance board. That seems pretty straightforward, but then the governance board chooses a charter school leader, and a budget, and policy, and stuff like that, but often they really, especially in district authorized charter schools, rely on the district to, to provide them a lot of that stuff, and that's what's going on with you guys too, and it's not unusual. But I wanted to break it out here to just show you that there is sort of this agreement that the governance board is choosing the district to be their authorizer, and they're choosing to get services from the district. It seems a little odd, because like they're in your district, and it's, it was started by folks in your district, but it is a partnership, and I guess it's maybe the best way to explain it. And so you really do want to have that community and parent voice of your governance board playing a role in some of those conversations around budget and hiring and policy and stuff like that. And then often the charter schools also bringing in outside service providers for curriculum and different things like that as well. So it's a bit of a tangle, and that's why I'm here. I'm here to help answer your questions, but it seems like things are working pretty smoothly. It sounds like there's a lot of support, and so I don't want to make it like overcomplicated, but just know that there is like this underlying structure to what you're doing. So all of that is to say, the best possible takeaway that I can think of for you is to just get to know those charter contracts. So I imagine your two charter contracts are quite similar to one another, so if you read one, the other one's going to read pretty similarly. But know what your schools look like, know how they are run, know who's the point person for them, know who's on the governance board, and just sort of make sure that you have this general understanding of why the schools exist and sort of how they exist. And then if you can kind of get your head around all that, like how they fit into the district, you know, they're, they're free to attend, it's an open lottery, you know, you don't have to be any certain kind of student to get into either one, you know, that kind of thing. You know who to call if you have questions. Those are the best things you can do as an authorizer, is just to know your schools. Then the next question is, how do you know if they're successful? So what are you looking for as an authorizer? Are you looking for enrollments? Are you looking for test scores? Are you looking for something, you know, really wonderful to happen to the youth of your community? Like, these are all the things to kind of watch for. So, and just, those would be my like big takeaway questions. So then my last couple of slides are just to wrap up. Again, I think authorizing can be so rewarding, because like I was just rattling off sort of how do you know your, if the schools are successful? You can be really creative. If your parents are super satisfied, then I'd say that's probably a win. You know, like if you've got, you know, staff retention, or student retention, or graduation rates, or, you know, employability rates, or, you know, all kinds of things you could measure. So just, it's your chance to be really creative and to show off how you as a district can think about learning goals in a multitude of ways. I think I'm going to skip over that, because I kind of went over it. So then my last couple of slides are just a way to encourage you to connect with other district authorizers around the state. So just know that our website has this big library of resources just for authorizers, you know, to think about like, what are those questions? What should I look for when I walk through the charter school? Like, what do I tell families when they ask why we have a charter school? All that kind of stuff. I have videos from the School Board Association outlining it from their perspective. I have guides, I have all kinds of stuff, and it's all free, and you can just go grab it. And then also, we have a Google group, and we have a professional learning network for district authorizers. And so you and your colleagues from all the other districts who oversee charter schools get together a few times a year online. We might even do one in person this year. We'll be at the School Board Association, just to like say, hey, how do you kind of get through this, you know, tricky bit, or that thing, or, you know, how have you handled this situation? So we're here to just support one another, and I try to keep that community going. So my information's here, included in the slides as well. Sherry can share it out. And I think that that should about do it for my presentation, but do you guys have any questions? Because I'd be happy to take a couple right away. There you go. That went fast, and it's a lot, so. The good news is you already have your charter schools, and their contracts are signed. I'm working with the governance board, I feel like we're doing great there. So you don't have to like do anything really immediately, other than to just sort of monitor.
I guess I have one question. The measurables, like your outcomes, is that something that the district would do on their own, or is this a service that you provide?
So in the two contracts that the district has with the schools, it probably outlines, I'm guessing it says something about, I probably read them months ago, and I just can't remember, about how the school will achieve similar academic data as the other schools in the district, or something like that. So you as a district are just sort of monitoring for right now, that like they're kind of on par. We should check and make sure what it actually says in there, just so everybody knows, but the state doesn't actually have any requirements for what's in there, and the authorizers have a lot of freedom. So you as a district just need to decide sort of what's appropriate, and what would you like to see for performance from the charter schools. We have a lot of examples, and we can certainly help facilitate that conversation and help you draft up some, but there's none that like we would say you have to have.
I would say one thing that we talked about at curriculum was having probably both governance boards coming at some, at some point, just so that everybody is on the same page, even though it is two contracts. You know, us as a board just wants to be sure that everybody's kind of in the same alignment, I guess, maybe the best way to explain it, so. And frequency needs, but determining what those measurables are, I think, like she said in the contract.
I think that's a great way to handle it. And I would say have the principals who are assigned to each of the charters also be at that meeting, and just like pick a random month, say like November, we're going to have ROA come, and we're going to talk about like what are the goals, you know, and just sort of have that formal, and then maybe they come back again in June and report out on how they did. Or, you know, like set up some kind of schedule. I think it's a great way to go, just so that there's this ongoing chat, and it doesn't have to be anything high stakes, but it's informational.
Any other questions from the board?
No, I kind of wanted to delve into that a little bit. How often are we looking to get feedback on progress from charter schools?
Is that something that would be in the contract as well, or is that something that we need to determine?
It may say it in the contract. I'm guessing it doesn't, because it's not a required component of the contract. So I would say if you want to set something that's just like, on this month, we get charter school updates, you know, or maybe you add it into like a rhythm that you already do. You know, do you focus in October on, you know, a certain school, or performance metrics of a certain kind? You could sort of just add them into that rhythm.
We do have.
It's going to be a similar flow, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was just going to say, it's going to be a similar flow as reporting out for all your other schools. And because both schools are sharing principles, when they have ACT scores, they're going to have ACT scores for both. When they have, you know, forward exams, they're going to have it for both. So it's not like a whole extra thing, you know? And then when they, when you get enrollment counts for the year, I think it would be important to, you know, during your third Friday count, just make sure that everyone makes note of like how many kids are actually enrolled in the schools, and then same for in January. When you're making your space determinations in December, that's a good time to just make sure, hey, how are seats in the charter schools looking? Do we need to factor that in when making our open enrollment space determination, stuff like that? So it's like more just including it in your existing conversations.
We do have periodic updates, I know, at the curriculum meetings. I don't have the schedule alliance in front of me, but I know there are some sprinkles throughout there.
Yeah, there's, the specific one to Partner is in November right now. So, we want it in there. And I think that's, that's what it's listed as right now.
I think the only thing that they'd maybe want sooner is just like a, like a enrollment update in September or October at the latest, just to kind of say, yep, we have kids at the school, you know, like verify that they're, they're really there and it's really rolling.
Well, depending on, depending on what, what our goals are for each of the schools, you know, maybe we could kind of craft what we're measuring for that. Like I'm reading right now in our section 6.2 of the Partner Contract, and it's just like what Sarah said, essentially, we're going to evaluate the same thing we would for all the other schools, and they list them, demographics, state testing. And they list them, demographics, state testing, school report card, student growth, you know, all that stuff. Um, but if we want to add something in there, whether it's, um, district student retention or, you know, improved graduation rates or, you know, just as she was saying, you know, more students in the workforce, more youth apprenticeship. Right, you know, I'm, I'm thinking of, that's my partner. You know, like that's the, the view from partner and from ROA, you know, we could look at it from that scope also. So just identifying what it is we want to value.
And Sherry, I think we talked about that before. Um, but we, I always hesitate to over promise in the contract just because we don't know what it's gonna look like. And so you can report out on all those things, but they don't necessarily need to all be in the contract. So I always encourage schools, like when you come in November, bring me everything. Bring all the, you know, bring how many partners you have, how many, you know, kids are coming to school who didn't come to school, the anecdotal things, the fun things, you know? And you can report all that, but, um, yeah, I mean, it might be a little early to like get too overly committed to modifying the contract. That's my general sense.
And how often can those be modified? Is it annually or?
How often you want to modify both on the contract? Because then the governance board would have to sign it and get it sent it back to DPI. And you can do it as much as you want, but, um, it's probably easier not to.
Well, I guess I was meaning more just like, we don't have to include it in the contract, but we for sure have some things that we want to measure.
Yeah.
Um, and whether it's documented or, I shouldn't say that, um, more in a narrative or whether it's something we track, you know, that's up to us.
Okay.
And we would track a lot of those things for all the buildings. And maybe we should start doing that. I don't know. I mean, those are some interesting things that we, every board is different and what we value changes based on that.
Any more questions? Thank you, Sarah.
Absolutely. Thank you for having me. Be in touch. I really mean it. I'm here to answer questions. All right, I'm gonna hop off. Take care.
See ya.
Bye. Thanks.
On to item 10A, 2023-24 substitute pay rate.
All right, so, uh, when the board adopted our new set of policies, policy 3120.04 relates to the employment of substitutes. And in that policy, it specifically says that the board will set compensation, um, a rate annually by the board. And so we're bringing this to the board to look at what we would want our subpay to be for the 23-24 school year. And this is something that we've reviewed in the past anyway. Um, just a little history. So our subpay had went up minimally over the course of, of time until, um, right after the pandemic. And then, uh, right at the pandemic or after the pandemic, when sub shortages really became at the forefront, um, the board raised our subrate, our daily subrate to $150 and at that time, um, per day. At that time, we were the frontrunners in, in pay. Um, you can see that there's a chart there of just some of the area schools in CISA III, some of the data that we were able to collect on CISA III. We're still, um, at the top, but others have either matched us or are getting really close to us. And we know from the year, um, pandemic year, if you will, um, that when we had a lack of subs, um, that put an extra burden on all of our staff, having to fill in the classrooms, um, and that led to, uh, a lot of burnout. Okay, so we know that subs are extremely valuable for us and we know that getting them is important, but we also know that subs are going to go, uh, for the most part, this is not 100% true in all cases, but they're going to be looking for the, the best rate that they can. Right? And so the recommendation is that we continue to be the for, the frontrunner in subpay and that we increase our daily subrate by $5, from $150 to $155 to be, um, at or near the top of all the other schools in, in our area in an effort to try to continue to recruit and retain the best subs that we can, which then has that downhill effect of continuation of learning, um, allows for our teachers to have preps and not necessarily having to sub in other classrooms, et cetera. Our long-term subrate, when somebody's in a, in a position for a long-term, that is established as a percentage of our base pay. So that's why you have kind of the, the odd number there and you'll see many other school districts have that same thing. But, um, what we need to establish hopefully tonight is what our 23-24 subpay, um, would be. And we're recommending $155, up $5 from last year. Questions do you have for me?
Just an average count, what would that cost the district further?
Um, minimal. Uh, did a quick kind of just, uh, accounts, uh, earlier today, looking at maybe $3,000 if we had, you know, on the high end of the average of the last couple of years for subs. So something that could, could certainly be absorbed, um, in our, in our, um, in our budget. And I would also point out that, um, if we have to, you know, have an internal coverage, that's also costing us money. So that $3,000 isn't necessarily dollar for dollar, you know, because we have to pay some of it. Even if we don't get a sub, we have to pay a teacher to fill that, um, that, those duties on their prep. So, but about $3,000 answers the question. Maybe $3,500, but that's probably the high end.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Board? Is there a motion then to approve increase in the daily subrate? $255 a day for 2023-24 school year?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Mr. Dowdner. Is there a second?
No, second.
Seconded by Mrs. Dickman. Any discussion? Ms. Traxel?
Aye.
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 Aye. Great. Item 10B, change in 2023-2024 special education staffing.
Okay, so each spring, um, you know, this is a long process. We start in December, personnel looks at it, you know, in January, February, the board sees it in the spring, eventually approves a staffing plan, um, for our district. And at that time, we have to, you know, decide what positions we need filled. Um, there's always a disclaimer in those, that staffing plan as it relates to special education because special education staffing is not driven so much by wants, but by what we have to do based on students' IEP and law. Okay? And so when we have students move into our district, um, have an increase in services, things that would increase our special education needs, we oftentimes have to have, um, change in, in special education staffing. And so this memo kind of encompasses some of the things that we've got going on. Um, without identifying any students, we have a cross-categorical teacher that we would be looking at adding due to the increased numbers and being able to meet, legally meet the required number of special education minutes. It's about a $72,000 increase. Uh, we have two aides. Um, one is for no more than four hours a day. The other is for, um, 28 hours a week, so seven hours a day. Um, those are again, to meet the needs of a special education student. And then the last one is an occupational therapist. We have, uh, used the Richland Hospital for purchase services for occupational therapy. Over the last few years, they are having trouble staffing those positions. Um, you approved earlier the physical therapy contract for the hospital. Uh, we don't have a good solution for an occupational therapist. So we're working with CISA. We want to get something posted, try to look at all of our options on what we can do, uh, to satisfy those needs from an occupational therapist standpoint. So those are the four positions that we would be looking at adding. Again, all, all required, um, by IEP. Mr. Joe Sims here to answer any specific questions that you might have. Do you have anything to add that I missed, Sean?
No, I thought that was a very good summary.
So it's not something that was planned for in our budget. So it will, you know, adversely affect our budget. But again, we, we don't have a lot of choice when it comes to, um, the law and the, the services required in an IEP or implemented in an IEP.
Why is the, um, is there a reason for such a high increase in the occupational therapist? From what the past four years has been? It's like.
If, if we were, and I'm gonna let Sean correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I'm gonna take a stab at it. Um, if we were to hire somebody full-time to service those, we'd have the salary and the, the fringes on top of it. Um, and that would be, if we could find somebody, that would be something we would explore. Whereas if we had somebody that we could contract those services through, it would just be a rate. Is that fair?
Yep. So that, so that number is considering family insurance at the most, I would add. But you're right. I mean, the, the rate that we paid is per hour legally, kind of like you agreed on for physical therapy.
So, so does that mean if you find somebody you can, um, contract with, it wouldn't go up that much? Is that what?
Uh, if we find someone, it would certainly depend on the benefits. And if they only take a, a single plan, it'd be cheaper than that, but.
But if you go through CISA, is that different?
We're exploring options. They have the same staffing problem as well.
Sure.
Um, and we've been in contact with them and that's why we have to be able to explore all of our, of our options.
And for them, what they charge us also includes the benefit. They just prorate it on how many days a district needs that person.
Sure.
In their district. And for us, with our needs, it'd probably be three to four days a week, which would probably be close to that figure.
So our needs for occupational therapy have increased?
They have.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, for the hospital, I mean, they, they have two occupational therapists and two, um, occupational therapist assistants working for us disorderly.
Oh.
So right now we don't have any occupational therapists for sure. And the assistants cannot work by themselves. They need a supervising therapist and that's what they can't provide us.
Any other questions from the board? Is there a motion then to approve the staff changes in special education for 2023-24 as presented?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mrs. Wirth. Is there a second? Seconded in Ms. Traxel. Any discussion? Mr. Dowdner?
Aye.
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 Item 10C, revision to policy 6682, years of employment.
All right, so we have two policies on the agenda. Um, the first is, as Mr. Mihang just alluded to, 6682 years of employment. Again, uh, as we adopted the Niola policies, now we're really in the fine tuning, really trying to look at things that may come up, things that may come up, things that we may, uh, have missed and then, and then revise them. This particular policy was actually one of our older policies that we brought over into Niola, just got a new number. The old policy as it relates to years of employment, um, had a language in the policy that said, an employee that works for the district, after 10, 15, 20, 25, 30, 35 or 40 years, shall receive an award and recognition. We've had employees who have worked more than 40 years and we have employees that are currently working and have been here for more than 40 years. And so, um, myself and the policy committee felt that we don't want to stop recognizing someone who's been here for 45, 50, 55 years. And so the new policy language, the proposed policy language, I should say, is in red and it simply says employees who have worked in the district 10 years, continuous employment and every fifth year thereafter. Example, 15, 20, 25, et cetera. And that way, if they continue to work here, we will continue to recognize them and give them an award every five years with no cap.
Any questions? Is there a motion then to approve revising policy 6682? Years of employment award as presented, effective immediately?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Dickman. Is there a second?
No, second.
Seconded in Mrs. Wirth. Any discussion? Mrs. Dickman?
Aye.
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 To item 10D, revision to policy 8500 for food service.
Okay, so this was one of those policies that was identified early on that, um, policy, um, best practice and actual practice were, were not aligned in any fashion. And so we really wanted to take a deep dive into this and, um, get a policy that, that works for us that we can adhere to, that we can follow and that is compliant with, with DPI. And so there are two parts of the food service policy that, um, we're recommending changes on. The first is in regards to bad debt. Niola's template language, um, said that at the end of any fiscal year, if a, um, if there was uncollected debt, it automatically became a bad debt. Okay? Our old policy, um, and what we are recommending is, let's give that a little bit more time. Right? We often have, in fact, we just had super registration, you heard earlier. We often have families that maybe have an outstanding debt from the previous year that the next year, then they, they catch up when they're paying their, their dues and their fees. And so to just automatically write it off as a bad debt at the end of a fiscal year seems fiscally irresponsible. The state allows us to carry it over from year to year. And so the language around bad debt would be to be similar to what it was with our old, uh, policy language. And that's to carry it over until the business office deems it uncollectible. And that may mean that we've lost, uh, communication with them. They've moved, we have no idea where they're at, um, or circumstances have just created it to be that it's just uncollectible. And then at that point, uh, we would write it off as a bad debt in the, in the fiscal year that that occurred. Um, maybe I'll pause there. Any questions regarding the bad debt? And this would be more in line with what our old policy was, not what, what Niola had for their template. See, none? The second, uh, portion is in regards to what happens when a family lunch account, um, starts to get low. Um, families have received robo calls in the past, have received communication. Um, but again, the policy and best practice and practice was not necessarily aligned. And so, uh, the policy committee and, um, business office and myself and the food service department, we really sat down and said, what, what makes sense for families? Um, and so the way the policy is written, I'll just kind of give a summary here. When a family lunch account or a family meal account gets to below $10, okay? That family would get a weekly reminder, um, hey, your account is getting low. Right? No restrictions, nothing like that, just a, just a reminder that it's getting low. Okay? When it gets to, um, and falls below zero, when it gets into the negative, then that message would change slightly to let the families know that they now are in, in the hole. Okay? That they would need to make a deposit. And as they get closer to the negative 20, um, alternative meals would be provided. Okay? So at negative 20, we would then provide an alternative meal. We still would want to feed the, the student, um, but provide an alternative meal and those families would be charged according to, to what they got. It'd be a sandwich, a fruit and perhaps a milk, a kind of a lighter, um, a meal if it was for lunch. And, uh, that would just continue to accrue on their account, but we would continue to remind them on a daily basis that they, uh, have fallen below that. And then the last threshold would be that when an account balance falls below $40 and when that happens, um, the student would no longer be able to be provided a meal until that was, uh, above 40. Couple of things to add to that, okay? One, throughout this process, we would make sure that we are never in a situation where we were embarrassing a student in the lunch line. We would try to take, you know, all measures possible to let the families know and also to let the students know, uh, early in the day, uh, and, and frequently. Right? Um, trying to make connections with. Trying to make connections with mom and dad, let them know, okay? Not when the student comes through the line and then all of a sudden, hey, you can't, you can't eat. Secondly, we would make sure that we are continuing to remind families that if there are extenuating circumstances, if things have changed, maybe you didn't fill out a free reduced meal application at the beginning of the year, remind them that those are options available to them so that if they have come across hard times and don't have the means to pay it, they understand that there are still ways that we can provide a meal and they don't incur this debt. And so we would try to help them through that process as well. So I think those are probably the two things, you know, when we think about, you know, possibly taking a meal away from a student, immediate, it's like, what if this happened, right? What if they, those extending circumstances, there are safeguards in play for them. They have an appeal process that they can go through if something, you know, real sudden happened. And if they just don't have the money, then they probably qualify for free or reduced services anyway. And so we would want to help them through that and make sure that they know all the services that are available. So the full policy is in the PDF attachment. Things that are in green are kind of ads, things that are in red are kind of struck. But those are kind of the two big things that have changed or that we're proposing to change in the food service collection. This should be consistent and clear for all of our families early in the year.
Could you just cover again how, like, they get, everything seems automated, so who actually would be looking at us out of time to, you know, to talk to that student or whatnot? How does that need to go over that again?
Yeah, we're still working out the details of that, but we would, you know, probably assign building administration and their administrative assistants to be helping with that process. They're the ones in connection with those kids, probably bring them down, you know, early in the day, let them know, hey, you know, I see you're at $2, it's gonna drop below, you might want to remind mom and dad if they're young and they can't do that, maybe send a note home with them, continuing to try to make connections with the families as well, trying to make sure that they're aware of where they sit. We currently have like $7,000 in negative lunch accounts. And so this has become a problem that is ongoing. And again, this is not people who qualify for free reduced meal, they don't get charged. These are people who have not qualified for that and have not got their accounts up to date without really any communication to the district. So I think it's something that we've got to take some measures with. We want to be respectful, we want to be friendly, but there also has to be a point where we say no more under the current circumstances. And that's what this is trying to do. Mr. Basworth, did I miss anything? You've spent a lot of time.
I'll take so, I think maybe the only thing you would have glanced over is, we would also increase the frequency of communications to families. When it's positive 10 or below, it's maybe a weekly message, but once it goes into negative, we would send messages daily to let them aware.
Yeah, thank you for that. I would also add that right now, our primary method of communication is these robocalls, or are these robocalls? We are, as we, you know, kind of put the final touches on launching the new website this fall, we have communication means that we're hoping, you know, hope that they work seamlessly, but that we can allow for not only the robocalls, automated phone calls, but text messages, emails, and voicemails and things like that, that we can find different ways to communicate with families as well.
Just a quick question, in the past, it's only been the robocall?
It's only been the robocall, it's only been once a week.
Just a scenario, if somebody goes below and they're quite delinquent and then they find out that they qualified for the reduced and free lunch program, how far back can we submit that to the USDA for reimbursement?
Yep, DPI says the day that they submit the application. So if they submit it on a, you know, Tuesday, November 2nd, right, and we don't process it until the 2nd, perhaps, that can go back to the 2nd, but only to the 2nd. So we can't make it retroactive. We would try to work with that family on trying to create some sort of a payment plan, something that would work for them. Another thing I would point out, that Mr. Dowdner mentioned that clicked in my head, is that also by law, we would never be able to turn down a student for a meal with cash, right? If they have the ability to pay regardless of where they're at, if they have cash, they, by law, can receive the meal. So we would always do that, whether they were in the hole or not. Mr. Dowdner, I think that's where it would be important for us as a school district to make sure that we're in communication, is we, instead of waiting for it to get to negative 40 and we're ready to cut them off, that we're having communications with that family early, sending the free reduced meal application home, making sure we're communicating with the families, do you need this, do you need help filling it out, do you have any questions? Not to insinuate anything, but to certainly help them.
Yeah, 'cause on your last point, it says they may not purchase à la carte plans with cash unless the student is able to bring their account current.
Correct, à la carte would be extra.
Right, I know that. So do we need to put that wording in there that you mentioned, or is it in there somewhere and I just didn't see it?
It is in there.
Yep, it's a couple paragraphs down.
Okay.
Did you find it?
It says, if the family has an account balance that falls below negative 40, they will not be provided a meal unless the child has cash on hand to purchase the food.
And the first paragraph under negative account balances, the very first sentence, students will be permitted to purchase meals from the district's food service using either cash on hand or food service account, so. And that, again, that is by law, and we have to move back to allow that.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve revising policy 8500, food service as presented, effective immediately?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mrs. Words, is there a second?
No, second.
Seconded by Mr. Traxel, any discussion? Mrs. Words?
Aye.
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 10E, 2023-24, goals and priorities.
Okay, so the board knows that we've been working diligently over the past several months to try to collect data. The board recently ranked some priorities for the 2324 school district for the school year. And then we went back and really talked about administratively, you know, what does this mean for us? There are a lot of different ways that you could interpret a broad goal, such as making connections with students and addressing their mental health. So what does, what does that really mean for us? And so we identified a handful of goals, narrowed it down to the top two in each of these categories, brought all of that information to the curriculum committee and curriculum assessment public relations committee is making the recommendation that we really establish six main goals, two in each of the top three priorities to focus on for the 2324 school year. And this is not to say that if it's not listed, that we're gonna ignore it or that it's not important, but these are the things that we're really going to put our money where our mouth is and really hold us accountable for these, for these things and trying to make some improvements on it. So under making connections with students and addressing their mental health, one goal would be that every student feels comfortable talking to or reaching out to at least one adult staff member. And goal number two would be that we try to ensure that every student has at least one good student friend. Now, the how, that's something that if the board adopts these goals, the administration's gonna have to work hard to establish the how. Like, how are we going to do this? How are we gonna measure that? And how are we gonna report that so that the boards and the public is aware of the progress that we're making? But this is kind of the what, like, what are we really focusing on? That's what we had thought and the committee thought as well. Priority number two, recruiting and retaining high-quality staff. Goal number one would be to ensure that every staff member has a sense of community and a sense of belonging within our school community and our, and our community community, but also to define what high-quality staff really means and really work hard, working with the staff to define what that is, so that when we're throwing around the terms, high quality, we want high-quality staff, what does that really mean? So I think we need to make sure that we can define that before we can do anything with it. And then priority number three, to get our students college and career ready. First goal would be follow-up with 250 past graduates to get a better understanding of, you know, their goals, their preparation, and their education. Did that align with their post-educational experiences? Did the things that they took from the Richland School District, Richland Center High School, prepare them for what they're doing after they graduate? Whether that's attending college or entering the workforce or anything in between. And then the second goal along that priority would be to work with the community to define what career-ready and employability skills really are. What is the community looking for from our students when they graduate as it relates to being career-ready and employable? So those were the six goals that the committee recommended, is recommending to the board. They can speak on any thoughts that they had. I would just conclude by adding this, I know that when we did the strategic planning back in 2018, we ended up with 14 goals and it was impossible to really focus on any one of them. And so this process, we really tried to narrow it down into things that, while there are many, many, many good things, what are the things that we are putting as an emphasis this year, right now? And these are the six things. So again, I want to emphasize that there are a lot of other really good things, but we can't emphasize everything or we end up not emphasizing anything. And so these are the, what we're recommending to emphasize. Does the committee have anything to add?
Uh, no, I don't.
Questions from the board for me?
Is there a motion to approve the goals for 2023-24 as presented?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Mr. Traxel, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Dickman, any further discussion, questions? Aye?
Aye.
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 Make the motion to move into closed session pursuant to section 19.851(c), E, and/or F of the Wisconsin statutes to consider employment promotion and compensation of employees for purposes of discussing individual employee hiring and related information and/or purposes of discussing administrator evaluations and Wisconsin statutes 19.851(f) and Wisconsin statutes 118.125 to discuss student enrollment applications and individual pupil information related to those applications. The board may take action on these items in closed session if necessary and appropriate. At the conclusion of the closed session, the board will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
No, second.
Seconded by Mrs. Words, discussion? Mr. Traxel?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you.